Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Acushnet School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. Per Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via live stream at the link noted in our agenda. It also can be found at the town's website as well as the school's website. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as it is practicable. We're going to call this meeting to order. The meeting is being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast. Please silence all your phones for the duration of the meeting. And we'll begin with the approval of minutes, payroll, and warrants. If I could please request a motion, please, to approve the school committee meeting minutes of November 10th, 2020?
No moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll have, we're gonna have to do a roll call orders on all of our votes succeeding. So go ahead, Kelly, when you're ready.
Go.
Yes. Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs? Mr. Hood? And Ms. Downing? Yes. And may I please request a motion for the approval of payroll and warrants?
Make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll take our vote.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no old business this evening, but we will move into delegation next. Comments are welcome during the public comment portion of the segment. Please forward all of your comments to our recording secretary, Kelly Benavides, at kellybenavides@acushnetschools.us to allow some of those comments to trickle in. Are there any at this moment? Benavides, no?
No, yeah.
Okay, so we will allow a little time for those to trickle in. We'll circle back after the next piece of our agenda, just to check on that. Moving into Dr. Bailey's superintendent report, over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Tonight, we've invited three main feeder school systems, New Bedford High School, Fairhaven High School, and Old Colony High School, to present, to give a very short presentation about the high school offerings. As you know, this is something that we do every year, and for new committee members, our eighth graders actually have at least those three choices of high schools. So our students are very fortunate, and what's great is they all offer something a little bit different. And it will be nice tonight to be updated in terms of any new programs that they've added. So up first to present, I'd like Superintendent Thomas Anderson to introduce his team. I know he's got a few team members, and we will start with New Bedford High School. And then the committee will be able to ask questions or comments after each presentation.
Good evening. And my role is very simple tonight, so I just wanted to basically express our appreciation and gratitude that you're still being able to do this this year in this interesting world that we're living in. So I wish everyone the best, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Joyce Cardoza.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. So here with me today, we have a student as well. So I'm going to review some of the programming from the high school, but really, I would like you guys to hear firsthand from a student. I always think that that's a powerful tool. So I believe there's a sheet that we had sent in to be shared, if that is going to be done.
I believe Mr. Oliver is going to share that.
Okay. Is he sharing that now, Dr. Bailey?
And who was this that sent it in?
I think it was sent by Jen Ferland.
Yeah, it was sent by Jennifer Ferland.
This afternoon, Chris?
Who was this that sent it in?
Jennifer Ferland.
Jennifer Ferland?
Yeah.
Jennifer Ferland?
I just resent it to you, Chris.
It's coming up right now.
Thank you. I apologize if you guys hear. I have a little one, an eight-month-old in the background. So from time to time, she's chiming in.
That's okay. We apologize for the delay as well.
Okay, we apologize for the delay.
Okay, can everyone see that now?
Yes.
Okay, so you can see, it's really simple, but we wanted to highlight some of the major pieces that really make New Bedford High School a comprehensive high school, truly that for all of our students. We offer 20 advanced placement courses. We have an Academy of Honors, which really offers students an amazing opportunity to begin with their freshman year, taking advanced placement courses, and then culminating in an AP Capstone diploma, which really signifies outstanding academic achievement and the attainment of college-level academics and research skills. So that's really an incredible program that many of our students, that start with dual enrollment, filter through, and then track through to that. And while they're in that, they have access to everything else in the high school as well. So it's not limiting them to just those courses. We also established several academies, career academies, some years ago now, a few years ago, and we've added to our academies additional courses. We added the Academy of Hospitality and Tourism, which has really drawn so many students in, really providing hands-on skills that can be applied in the field or at the college level with students leaving the high school with certifications in the different areas. We have a state-of-the-art finance lab that, you know, literally has the same clock ticked that you see on Wall Street, like students are using the tools that they would actually use in the field. So incredible opportunities there. And again, students who aren't in those academies are not limited to just those courses. So they have access to advanced placement courses as well as those courses, as well as the arts. New Bedford High School, for many, many years, has been a staple for the arts. We have 18 music offerings from college level to advanced placement courses in that area, as well as theater and the visual art classes that we have. We have the longest-running JROTC program that offers students great opportunities in the high school, even if they don't want to continue into the field, you know, of the military, and exposes them to hands-on skills as well, teaches them life skills that they will use. And, you know, New Bedford High School athletic programs, Division I sports, we offer so many different opportunities for students. And thankfully, even during the pandemic, we've been able to continue with most of the athletics. So students have been able to still excel there. So I know it's a lot. Last year, we showed a video that really captures a lot of our programming, and we have that up on our website because it shows what the state-of-the-art lab looks like. It shows that our high school, you know, students have one-to-one devices so that, you know, they can access everything in school. And thankfully, now, while we're remote, or when we're hybrid, the same way. So with that being said, I can obviously answer questions now, or we can hear from Raquel, one of our seniors at the high school, who has accessed many of the programs and class offerings that I just spoke about, and she can talk about her overall experience at New Bedford High School. Raquel?
Hello, everyone. Happy New Year. I'm Raquel. I'm a senior at New Bedford High School. I've been going to New Bedford High School for the past four years. And I just want to say right after that, that I've never once regretted or questioned my decision to go to New Bedford High School when I made that decision incoming my freshman year. In terms of academics, as Ms. Cardoza began to explain, I'm a part of what we have at the high school called the Academy of Honors, which involves that AP Capstone diploma program, where I started taking AP classes, so college-level classes, as a freshman in high school, which is really unlike an experience that you can have at many other high schools in the area. By the time I will have graduated in June, I will have taken 14 of those advanced placement courses. So meaning that I can receive, I will have received college credit for 14 different courses, which in the long run, once I get to college, can either help me be ahead in my courses, or even help me receive credit for those courses, so I can end up saving money in the long run. The overall academic scene at New Bedford High School is so enjoyable. The teachers are not only there to teach you, get you engaged, but they're also a support system. They understand that high school's a difficult time. There's a lot of stress involved. You have things other than just your daily homework and class activities. So it's really nice to know that the teachers aren't there just to teach you, but they're more of a support system as well. And like Ms. Cardoza also had said, being in the Academy of Honors, I'm not limited to just taking those advanced placement or higher-level courses. Some of my favorite classes all of high school was actually a part of the Academy of Health, the Health Academy, which was Sports Medicine and Anatomy. I had my very own homeroom teacher for both those classes, and it just kind of goes to show that just because you are in one of these academies doesn't mean you're limited to the academies, and you're able to access all the different resources that the school has to offer, which I'm very grateful for. Beyond just being in the classroom, I've participated in three varsity sports for all of my high school career. I'm now a captain of all three sports. In the fall, I play field hockey. This past year, we actually won the South Coast, the South Coast Championship. And it just kind of goes to show that our tradition of excellence goes beyond just the classroom, and it really goes into our activities. In the winter, I'm currently playing ice hockey. I play in a girls' ice hockey co-op with the Bishop Stang team, which is a good opportunity that we have to offer at New Bedford High School, because girls' hockey isn't as popular in this area. So I'm glad to know that going to New Bedford High, I still had that opportunity to continue playing a sport that I love. And then finally, I play lacrosse in the spring, which is also a very enjoyable program. And beyond just the three sports that I play, I have plenty of friends that play soccer, football, and do a bunch of different other activities that they love as well. Beyond just the athletics, I'm a part of the Great Outdoors Club, and I have plenty of time to do other outside-of-school activities that don't necessarily associate with New Bedford High, but are a way to contribute back to the community in a different way. So I'm grateful that I'm able to kind of balance that time between my school sports and my outside-of-school activities. Plenty of my friends are multi-activity people. It does, just because you play a sport doesn't mean you can't be in the band, doesn't mean you can't be in JROTC. It's very, very much mixed, and I'm really grateful that you're able to do that at New Bedford High, because all of the programs have so much to offer. So if you have the opportunity to participate in more than one program, I think it's a great idea. The overall environment of New Bedford High School is unlike no other. Like I said, my decision to go to New Bedford High School, I think, is one of the best I've ever made. I've been going to New Bedford Public Schools my entire life, so I kind of naturally gravitated toward the high school, and I'm so glad that I did. The diversity at New Bedford High School is unlike no other, and everyone kind of, because there's so many different types of people, there's no cliques, there's no exclusion. Everyone's welcomed, and it's just a very accepting community. The school, as much as they provide for us in terms of athletics, activities, and academics, they also want to make sure that you're enjoying your four years of high school. So we have pep rallies. We have a fun thing called the Whaler Wave, which is kind of like our cheer squad for the whole school that goes to sports games and band events. We have school dances, so kind of going just beyond that classroom scene to make sure that everyone's high school experience is enjoyable as a New Bedford High School student. And I know that there's a lot of worry that sometimes goes into sending someone to New Bedford High School, but I can go to show you that as long as you're doing the right thing, your experiment, your experience at New Bedford High School is going to be a great one. Not only does New Bedford High School support you while you're in high school, but it prepares you for that after-high-school scene. Like Ms. Cardoza said, we have plenty of academies that prepare you for career and jobs right after high school, and also, we do a great job with preparing the students that want to go to college. As a senior, I, this past six months, I've been applying to schools and getting stuff like that done, and my teachers, guidance counselors, and other different people in the school system have been huge support systems throughout the entire process. I've recently been accepted into my top school, which is Stanford University, and I'm just so grateful to know that I did, I could not and would not have done that alone. I could, I want to thank all my teachers and everyone that's helped me to get there, and that anybody at New Bedford High School has the resources to get that dream job, to get to that dream college. And I'm just so grateful that New Bedford High has got me to where I am today.
So as you can see, we are more than proud of Raquel, and she's phenomenal, but highlights the experience of so many of our students at New Bedford High School, and the opportunities that are afforded to students if they take advantage of it. You can't help but smile when she speaks. So thank you, Raquel. That was, that was great. Are there any questions for myself or Raquel?
I just would be remiss if I didn't say how proud I am of Raquel. I was her elementary school principal, and I just am so proud to see how far she's come. I'm not surprised in the slightest. She's so articulate. Raquel, I'm so proud of you. Keep following your dreams. You did a perfect presentation tonight. Thank you so much. And it's so great to see how grown up you've become. And the way you speak, it's like you're already in college, to be honest. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Raquel, thank you for sharing your story, and, you know, good luck on your Stanford path. It's going to be a great journey, and I know you'll be successful.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
As a New Bedford High alum, I am proud of you, and I wish I could say I was as impressive as you are at your age, but I surely was not. So congratulate.
Thank you so much.
Are there any questions about anything you may have heard or seen on our bulleted sheet? We welcome everyone to, you know, access our website to watch the video where you can see some of the students in action. Unfortunately, you know, the material is from last year, given, you know, the current situation, but we'll be updated as soon as we can be back in the classroom. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Can I just take one minute really quick to introduce a new member of our team, Ms. Magali Sanchez? She's on here. She is our new curriculum data and assessment manager for accelerated and enrichment programs. So she is also happy to take any questions anyone has about anything moving forward.
Thanks. Thanks, Magali.
Does anybody on the committee have any questions? For anyone on the team?
I have, I have one question, just because I'm kind of new here. Do we ever invite any, I was just thinking of this as Raquel was speaking and presenting, do we ever invite any students from the various high schools that they have options of going to, into Ford Middle School to speak for the kids? Is that something that we do?
Yes. So we have a high school night that we usually do every year. This year, it was done virtually. And usually, the presentations are done by multiple schools, including private schools who come in. And in years past, we've had many students come in to present their experiences at the various schools to our, to our students. So that's already taken place this year virtually. And I do know that the counselor has been working with the students in terms of working on their choices. But the idea here is every year, we have our feeder schools come in and present, to let our school committee members know if there's any new programs. It also is great for the public to hear, should they have any new offerings, because I think they offer something a little different for, and it's great for our Acushnet students to have a choice.
And Dr. Bailey, if you recall, we also, we didn't do it last spring because of everything that had taken place. But the two years prior, we had the entire eighth-grade class come over to the high school, and they actually got to see all of what you heard about. They watched pieces of the sports teams. They saw that live. They saw performances live. They heard from students about the academies. So we did, you know, a showcase for them so that they actually could see it live. So that was a really nice experience for them.
Absolutely. So we encourage all of our students and families to make a really informed decision, looking at the websites, looking at the videos. And like you said, in the past, prior to COVID, we've done field trips to various schools to give our students the experience and the opportunity to check out their future high schools.
Right, thank you.
Hey, Dr. Bailey, what were, you probably told us this before. What were, what are the numbers again? Like, what percentage of the kids go to New Bedford High versus Fairhaven?
The greater majority of students attend Fairhaven High School, and then we have a smaller percentage that attend Old Colony. However, the numbers for New Bedford High School over the past two years have been continuing to climb. So we're pleased with, you know, like I said, offering the choices.
Well, I had a question, and this could also be for anybody from the New Bedford High School. I know we have the programs where our students, you know, go over there and do a field trip. But could parents listening to this video contact the school directly for like one-on-one shadow programs? Is that offered as well to the schools?
Yes. So we do provide that, and we coordinate accordingly. And what we try to do is match the student based on interests. So if it's a student that is really interested in, say, band or, you know, the Academy of Honors, we'll try to match them with a student that has a similar schedule to what they might have, so that they get, you know, an experience that really would closely match what they might experience.
And should parents contact you directly, or contact the middle school guidance counselor to get in contact with you? How would, how would a parent know how to make that work?
Generally, the parents do contact us directly, and it comes to me. So I'm happy to field that and support that. With the current status of things, I don't know if we would be offering shadows, you know, right at this moment in person, but we could probably look to do something virtually where they're able to at least experience what the classes might be like.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mrs. Gomes, we can certainly ask those questions of the other superintendents.
Yep.
But I will say that we have strong partnerships with all three high schools. We work very collaboratively. So Joyce, very nice to see you again, and congratulations again.
Thank you.
My lights. Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any questions for anyone at New Bedford High School while the team is still here? No? Well, thank you again, Superintendent Anderson, Joyce, and all of your team. Very much appreciated. I don't know, Superintendent Anderson, if you have any parting comments, but we're going to move on. All right. Thank you all so much. Great to see everyone. Congratulations again, Raquel. Take care.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. Bye-bye. So next up, we would ask Superintendent Baldwin from Fairhaven High School and his team to present.
Sure.
The offerings. How are you, Bob?
I'm doing great. Thank you so much for having us. It dates me how many years I've been back, and I really appreciate it. And tonight, again, Mrs. Kohler, Tara, my partner in crime, who also was so significant in doing what is amazingly being done at Fairhaven High School, is with me as well. There is no way that I'm going to top Raquel. Anybody who has doubts or feels down in the dumps, just need to talk to our great students and start to feel better. And Raquel is a credit. And I think, knowing that we have Aaron Polansky next, and Old Colony, and I think Acushnet is very fortunate. You have some great options and great choices to find the best match, and your parents and your students to find the best match for them. So I am technologically inept, but I will do the best I can to either share my screen, or there were a few pictures that I sent along. If they're not able, I can share my screen. I will, I will try that. So what is, Dr. Bailey, what is the best way? Oh, I can't.
Yeah, we could do it either way.
So why don't you do it? And I'm saying, like, we're going to do these pictures for, like, three seconds each, but these pictures are what you call turning lemons into lemonade. If we could just keep going to the next one, there should be about six pictures. Great. This is in front of the high school on graduation day. I'll give you the story behind it all, and Dr. Bailey's great cooperation. This is again, we just got a few pictures that took place. We couldn't have gotten a better day. We were, you know, some people put off their graduations for a while, and we said, everybody's made plans for this. Our kids deserve to have this happen. We can go to the next one. That, again, we toured, as we did with your schools, we had the teachers at each and every, we can go to the next one, thank you. Each and every elementary or middle school that they had been through, the parade went both to Ford and to the elementary schools in Fairhaven. There were a couple other pictures, and if they make it, they do, and if they don't, that's, that's all you have. No big deal. There were two pictures that started. We began our graduation ceremony last year at your site, and we thought it was very fitting to do so. I am going to tell you that, and Dr. Bailey and I walked the site, it was like, it was like a tailgate of a Patriots game. It took about 20 minutes to get in the queue to even get in the parking lot. We both met, walked through. There were, this was one of the first times that people had been together for a while. We then had this procession go from Acushnet. I could not believe all the people that came out, and then through Fairhaven, and then to Fairhaven High School. It's turning lemons, as I said, into lemonade, but it is a bigger story here. And the story is the synergy between the communities. When your children choose, yes, I can tell you about Fairhaven High School, and in each of the core content areas, I can tell you that we have multiple AP programs, thanks to you. When we increase the volume of students, we increase the ability to have more and more AP programs. One thing that we are very proud of at Fairhaven High School is all means all, and anyone who wants to attempt to take advanced placement, or anyone who wants to attempt to get into the world of art one through our advanced art programs, or whatever it may be, everyone has an opportunity to do whatever they want to do to get involved for that opportunity. We had a theater program that was unfortunately canceled in March, that has about 12% of our entire student body participate. Some behind the scenes, some is in the Coral Program. Our athletic programs have about 53% of our student body involved. If you are at Fairhaven High School, you are not only highly involved in a great academic program, but you're involved in a sense of belonging, a sense of being together. We really, really, Mrs. Kohler and I, and with Mr. Kulak and the team that is there, since the beginning, said it's about human beings, it's about culture building. You know, whatever a child aspires to be in their life, our mission statement is independent, productive, and successful. And whether they are going to Stanford, or whether they are entering into skills work, or whatever they choose to be or do in their lives, they need to have the human skills and the ability to persevere, have ambition and integrity. And that is another cornerstone of what we've done. So recently in the spring, we were just named with US News &amp; World Report, one of the best high schools in the United States. And that's an honor that's been a long time coming, and this year, it was officially put together, and we have that honor. We're just really proud, but at the same and the ability to persevere, have ambition and integrity. And that is another cornerstone of what we've done. So recently in the spring, we were just named with US News and World Report, one of the best high schools in the United States. And that's an honor that's been a long time coming. And this year it was officially put together and we have that honor. We're just really proud, but at the same time, we're very humble. We know we can always do better. We want the input of everyone to tell us how we can do better. We cherish our relationship with Acushnet. I say every year when there's a graduation, there are three children and two of which are from Fairhaven and one of which are from Acushnet. And that, I couldn't tell you if I walked through Fairhaven High School tomorrow, who is from Acushnet or who is from Fairhaven. It is an absolute mix and a meld that probably starts sometimes in little leagues or sometimes in youth leagues or wherever it is. And it continues through that amazing event that we had for graduation. So I'm not going to talk any longer. If you have any questions, we're just really proud of who we are. We're really proud that Acushnet makes us who we are. We think it's an amazing match. You've been making decisions with your feet and we want to continue to serve those decisions because we think that we do have similar cultures and a similar way of doing things. We work very hard with your administration to not make it. I always use this, that children are not born in grade nine. And we work very hard collectively to make sure that we're matching programs as students come up through. So I'm going to kick it to Mrs. Kohler. And, you know, this gets to the high school night. A few years ago, Mrs. Kohler, I believe, was still the principal at the time and we had a high school night and a family who graduated, the class president last year, Abigail Bernardo, was our class president from Acushnet. She's just amazing. And she was the last one to graduate because that's how we do it. And we gained Abigail and her sister. And lo and behold, her mother and her father in our district because of one of those nights that we had. And Mrs. Kohler has something she's going to share real quick. But we love our relationship. We can always do better and want to know what we can do to get better. And we want to continue to work with you together in that realm. So Tara, do you have, are you ready?
I'm ready. Thank you all for having us tonight. This is obviously something we get to do quite often. I don't have the best connection, so I'm just going to keep my audio on if that's okay. One of the things that we've always talked about with the students and the transition is when I was first principal at Fairhaven High School, we only had a handful of students coming from Acushnet. And those kids really shared with us that they felt sometimes like out of place or it was weird. So over time, we worked really hard to make those transitions more meaningful. And now, honestly, like Dr. Baldwin said, when you walk through the hall, it's just, you know, you don't know who's from where. There is no difference. It is an adjustment for everybody at first, but I think that's a good adjustment. I think having that communities come together is a great opportunity for kids to build new friendships and have other experiences. So I'm very proud of the work that we've done in collaboration with our Acushnet families and students. So one of the things that Mr. Bernardo wrote to us after the graduation that you just saw photos of, and this really meant a lot to me. He wrote, "I didn't get a chance to thank you in person yesterday, but I want to tell you how much I appreciate the education Abby and Sophia have received under the Fairhaven Schools." He goes into, he talks a little bit here, I'm not going to read you the entire thing, of the night that Dr. Baldwin was just talking about. It was a high school night. They came through, they were excited about the district. And Abigail was really, really shy. So this is what he writes about Abby. "Abby has grown so much in the four years and it flew by. As a freshman, she was so shy that I remember her having a hard time even talking to anyone. Your high school was run in such a way that the same shy girl grew into the mature young lady that you see presenting at the school committee meetings and making speeches comfortably and becoming the president of the Honor Society and her class." So the transition and the transformation for him were really something that really left a mark. And then she, he goes on to talk about academics, you know? Because of the lessons she has learned academically, she got a five on the AP Bio test and professionally has role models like you, Lauren Millet, Paula Jordan, and many others. "All I can say is FHS has truly prepared her for the next steps in life. Thank you so much for the education you all have given her. It is everything we could have hoped for when we met you and your staff four years ago." So I just want to share that, you know, I think as, you know, there's a school committee meeting and certainly parents must watch this and such. I just want people to hear from a parent perspective that, you know, we know you're rolling the dice to trust us with your child and we take that very, very seriously. So I just want to say that we've had a wonderful working relationship all the way across. And it's really been a benefit to, I think, both communities of students. So thank you again for your time and for having us. And if you have any questions, we're both more than happy to answer.
And I'll just close with, it's amazing that Abby Bernardo was on our school committee for two years. Let me tell you, she was not shy. There were times in meetings when I was, you know, on the hot seat from her, asking questions about things that were going on. So kudos to all, all the kids who come from Acushnet and we hope that they all find their special place so they can excel in life. So we're here for you if you have any questions or comments for us.
No questions. Just thank you, Bob and Tara, for once again, joining us and sharing information about your school. And I know it's very helpful for our, for our families to hear. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For joining us. So next up, we have Aaron Polanski, Superintendent Polanski from Old Colony High School. We would ask him to share his presentation.
Good evening. Can you hear me, Dr. Bailey?
I can hear you.
I'm working on signals in my house where my children run around downstairs. The world of Zoom, right? So I would like to first thank you for the opportunity to be with you this evening and echo everyone's sentiments relative to Raquel. What a beautiful representation of the Acushnet schools. I think that as we pursue education, the success of our young students is really why we started, right? I don't know if any of the superintendents who joined the meeting tonight raised their hands during college and said, "I can't wait to be a superintendent." I think we all started somewhere else. And that's a really important piece of this puzzle. And children are why. I'd like to talk a little bit about the opportunities at Old Colony. Some of, some of our highlights have been that we've led many of the southeast schools in terms of our dual enrollment participation in early college opportunities through collaborations with UMass Dartmouth and Bristol Community College. Over the past two years, our students have earned over a half a million dollars in cooperative employment through our co-op employment opportunities where during their vocational cycles, our juniors and seniors can actually go to work during school time. We call it earn while you learn. We offer 13 different vocational programs for our students. And your vocational program is something that you're placed in halfway through your freshman year, which is right about this time of year. And those people become an integral part of your life. It's much like when you're participating in a sports team. So for three and a half years of your high school career, you spend time during our vocational cycle with the people in your program. And you build very close knit relationships, which is a real benefit for a student going through their high school experience. We always like to say that students are a name and not a number. And by nature of the vocational involvement, you'll always feel as though you have a home. Our athletic department, over the last three years, has won the Walter J. Markham Award two of those three years. And that's an award for the most successful small school vocational program in the state. And I'll just move through a couple more highlights. Last year, we had 129 students from Acushnet at Old Colony. This year, we have 144 students. It's an increase of 15 students. And so we're excited to see that growth in that partnership with the town of Acushnet. Just last month, on December 11th, Old Colony was represented at the National Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence Conference as part of their Best Practices from America's Best Schools Conference. And we're proud of that. And we were also recognized on PBS, WGBH, and the NCLA National Network for our partnership with Madison Park High School. As many people know, the towns we serve are not an extremely diverse set of towns. And so we've gone out of our way to build relationships or a sister relationship with Madison Park High School in Boston, where our students participate in an exchange. And actually, a number of our students are involved in a year-round symposium on a commitment to equity. And we're quite proud of that. And we've received a national attention for that. Our goal is to build the whole student. Our goal is to make sure that when students graduate from Old Colony, they're prepared for life beyond our walls. And I have a quick video that I'd like to show if that's okay. I'll share my screen for any of the viewers who may be watching. And I just want to make sure that the sound is working. Is the video showing on the screen? Let's see here. Before I continue, was the sound working?
The sound is working. I see a blank screen, black, but the sound is working.
Okay, so we'll give it a minute to connect and I'll make sure that, if you don't see anything after a few seconds, please let me know.
Okay.
A hidden gem amongst the cranberry bogs of southeastern Massachusetts.
We're not seeing it.
80-acre Rochester campus is home to experi-
Did you say you weren't seeing it?
No.
Okay.
It was just a black screen.
So you could hear it, but you couldn't see it?
Yeah.
All right, give me one second and let me see if I can troubleshoot this. Let's try this.
A hidden gem amongst the cranberry bogs of southeastern Massachusetts. Our 80-acre Rochester campus is home to experiences designed to prepare today's students for tomorrow's challenges. Discover and develop your passions. Graduate with college credit, industry certifications, and professional licenses to complement your skills in your selected area of expertise. If you're interested in specializing in a vocational education before attending college or would like to embark on a successful career upon graduation, we are your answer. Our calling is to transform lives. Your success defines our legacy. Consider the possibilities. Welcome to Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School. One of the biggest draws of Old Colony Regional is our ability to connect with the student and also to connect with their families. We really have the opportunity to build relationships. And before we can ever bring our students to a high level of learning, it's really important that that foundation of relationships is created.
Kids feel like they can be themselves, that the relationships that are being built between staff and students, students and students is tremendous. And they really know how to make people feel comfortable here.
They make it a comfortable environment so you know that you can go to a professional teacher and say, "I'm really struggling with this. Can you help me? Can I have extra assignments so I can practice?" And it's not a school of 1,000 or 2,000. It's really nice because every single teacher knows you by your first name. Even the teachers I haven't had in my four years here, they know who I am. And it's like that for everyone.
It's a strong school community and students, I talk to them in the cafeteria in the morning or just around school. And I don't get the normal, "Oh, it's school." They want to be here. They're excited to learn. They're really excited to venture into their technical areas, but also on the academic side, they really want to be in class, which is great.
No matter what career path you take out of high school, I think it sets a good foundation, a good base of skill sets. You learn a trade, you learn something that someone can never take away from you.
I know it sounds kind of dramatic, but like changed my life because it's a trade that I have. It's something that I can do for the rest of my life and it's a fallback, but it's also part of my career. And I don't think a lot of people realize that, like, you come out of this school with a lot more than you would any other high school.
I think the students at Old Colony Regional have the opportunity to focus on their academic work, but also to specialize in a skill set that will help them for the rest of their life. And our job is not just to prepare kids for the graduation stage. Our job is to set kids up to have the best possible life.
The people that work here really appreciate and love the students. They want to see them succeed, not only in what they're doing in the day-to-day work with their classes and their shops, but they want to make sure that they're learning the skills that they can take with them after they graduate, whether they go to college or into the trade, any type of workforce.
We have a number of students that do continue on to college and really they're ahead of their counterparts. They're actually, depending on where they go to college, they may have the credit articulated for them at that college level. As far as out in the workforce, it's the same thing. Our students start their entry level, their introductory work, kind of out on co-op. The employers see the value in our students and want them to be part. And a lot of our co-op opportunities then turn into full-time employment opportunities or positions that they can continue while they are going to take college courses and they're continuing their college education, they continue their, you know, working at their co-op during that time.
Gives you a skill right out of high school. I mean, I still want to go to college because that's something I've always thought that would be useful in my education. But you can get a job right out of here. And the thing is, is that when you go to this folk school, you're going to have like kind of step up from everyone.
I think this high school really pays attention to learning environments that are best for students. And it really caters to how students learn best in a classroom and teachers aren't afraid to be innovative and new and really try things that are working for students where other high schools might be apprehensive to let students have that freedom. And I really think this school embraces that.
I felt like I really received a lot of attention from the teachers. It's a tight-knit community. I know it continues to be that way to this very day. And it really gave me the chance to flourish and to really, you know, see what my strengths were.
I think it's an incredible experience to be able to come here and to fit into a family of, you know, 300 to 400 people. It's unlike any other experience.
Most high schools you go to, you're just a number. You're treated as a statistic. I think when you come here, you know, the teachers will really look out for you and not too many high schools are not for that.
This school is like no other. There's, there's just something special about it that people need to know that when you send your child here, you're sending them to a safe environment and you're sending them to a place where people truly care about their well-being.
We want to take care of those things first and foremost. And once a student feels comfortable and we connect with them and we teach them to connect with the world outside of our walls, we can move into a creative phase. And when we created a vocational school, unbelievable things happen. We open doors for futures and we can truly help students direct the pathway for their life. It's inspiring for the student. It allows the student to inspire the people around them. Our students are decorated and our students have an ability to do some things that high school students don't typically accomplish. And we're proud of that.
Did the video show up, I hope?
It did.
It wasn't seven minutes of sound, that would have been horrible. So that's an overview of who we are. I'm just, I saw Raquel speak and I think of our students and how blessed we are to have many who would represent us much like Raquel. I think that's due in great part to the work that's being done in the Acushnet schools. I feel luckier than ever to be surrounded by the superintendents that we were with tonight. I think that we've come together as a beautiful team to complement one another. I think whatever decisions our Acushnet students choose for this upcoming 2021, 2022 school year, they can't go wrong. I will say that our selection process and interviews will begin in the beginning of February. And so it's really important for any of the students at Ford who are viewing this meeting to know that as of tonight, we have 45 applications from the town of Acushnet. And for those who would like to be considered in the first round of applications, they should submit those applications before the end of January. they should submit those applications before the end of January so that they're given consideration. Submitting an application does not mean that you will be admitted, nor does it mean that you need to commit. So it is not binding in any way. It only gives you an option. And so we want everyone to know that. Last year, we received 330 applications for 150 slots. This year, we're already over 250 applications and anticipate a significant increase because right around now is when we see a huge influx. But we love our relationship with our Akushnet students. We look forward to the many partnerships, whether it be through STEM partnerships or literacy through sport when we send our students back to read at the elementary schools. We're, we're in the midst of a NASA Global Education Program launch. And I guess the word launch is the correct word, right? For a NASA program, but we're going to be exploring that partnership at the high school level with some high-level NASA individuals. And we would love for our Akushnet students to consider an Old Colony education. If there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Questions?
I have a question. Just curious, why is the attendance limited to 150 students from Akushnet?
It's actually not limited at all, but our freshman class is limited. So last year, we accepted 150 students in the freshman class. It was the first time in the history of the school, actually, that we were unable to accept any non-resident students because of the interest level from our resident and member towns. So that's a good thing. We saw a huge increase. Actually, Akushnet had the largest number of students added of any town. We saw 15 additional students in attendance at Old Colony this year from Akushnet. And we attribute that to some of the creative activities and programming that have taken place. We've also put lights on our football and soccer fields recently, which I know the kids are excited about. We continue to explore ways to expand programming. And so the freshman class, John, just for clarification, is limited to 150. But students qualify for admission and it's a blind admission process. A couple of years ago, we updated our district agreement so that there would not be quotas in respective towns so that no student would be denied if they qualify for admission. So that's a good thing.
Is this a problem in, in most vocational schools today where they're just unable to meet the demand?
So it's funny you ask, John. The demand for a vocational education has exploded. It's a nationwide thing. It's not just Massachusetts. And when I see what our kids do in the classroom and I see students who leave with a cosmetology license, but can also go on to study neuroscience at Stonehill, let's say. We have a student who's in her third year or fourth year now of neuroscience and she's an intern with Harvard Medical. And I think about her success and the fact that she's also been able to work at a salon and pay her way or contribute to her college education. Those are significant skills that students are graduating with. We have a student right now who's interning with an architecture firm. She's a CAD student and she just put in her application to Harvard University. So I think that where vocational education used to have a certain image, that image has been totally dispelled. And what we're seeing is high-level students, high-level interest and real affinity for the opportunity to do something that we really enjoy in, in, at the same time, we do something that perhaps is considered necessary, right? So our kids love going to school and I wish we weren't in the midst of a pandemic because I think every committee member should have the opportunity to walk through Old Colony and tour and see the intricacies of what goes on and the beauty of what a vocational classroom truly looks like. So when this clears, please take me up on that invitation. I know that Dr. Bailey and I have had the opportunity to walk through with some members of, whether it be the town or the committee, but we want you to come through and see what's going on. We want families to be able to do the same. But I think to your point, yes, vocational education has absolutely exploded.
I had a question for you.
Madison Park Exchange, I don't know if I got that right, but do all the kids get an opportunity to participate in that? How does that work?
So last year, we launched it. We felt as though, I grew up in Natick and in Natick, they had a Metco program and it really opened our eyes to people who maybe weren't from the same background as us or didn't look like us. And we're a very homogenous group, you know? To be, to put it bluntly, Old Colony is a very white. We draw from primarily white demographic. And that's just the nature of the population of our sending towns. But that's not the world and that's not what we want our students to see. We want the student, our students to see what's out in the world. That's a really important piece of education. And my very dear friend, Kevin McCaskill, is the executive director of Madison Park. And he's a six-foot-four African-American man and I'm a five-foot-four Caucasian man. And when we stand next to each other, it's like Danny DeVito and Arnold Schwarzenegger in Twins, you know, we're just total opposites. And we're both very loving, fun-loving, silly people. And when, what we did was we took six programs and about 50 students and two staff per program to Madison Park. And at the same time, they sent the same population to Old Colony and we had a day of exchange. And when I walked into Madison Park and gave Kevin a big hug, you could see all these smiles on the kids' faces. And that's what we want. We want them to see the world beyond their walls and understand that love wins every time, right? And when the kids left from Old Colony, they said, that was awesome. We want to do that again. And Kevin called me and he said, I don't know what happened at Old Colony, but our kids loved it. And we had real talk before we left, you know? We talked about, what do you think you're going to see? What are you expecting to see? And then we broke down stereotypes and it was a beautiful, beautiful thing. But what happened was people at the national level caught wind of it. PBS caught wind of it, WGBH caught wind of it. And they invited us in to do a podcast and a show based on the exchange. And since then, Kevin and I have partnered to speak to this partnership on a national level in a number of different settings. But Ron, to your point, I think it's important for our kids to know that it's not just about the textbooks, right? Education's about the human being. Education's about the soul. Education's about, education is about teaching kids to be their authentic self. And not just kids, you know? We want our staff to be able to be their authentic self with a level of confidence and care. And so we hope that when our, our students graduate from Old Colony, they can be that whole person. And our job, you know, when New Bedford talked about being a place where there's so many different populations represented, that's a wonderful thing that they have and we don't, right? And so we need to create that. If we're serious about educating the whole person, we have an obligation to create that. So we put that in our district improvement plan and followed through with this partnership with Madison Park. And as recently as this year, we were approached by two educational organizations that said, we want to pay for your students to be a part of a year-long Commitment to Equity program where 10 students from each school will be part of this program and they'll meet monthly. So 10 Madison Park students and 10, and 10 Old Colony students are meeting monthly in a Commitment to Equity program run by outside organizations, fully funded by those organizations. And that will be in addition to our exchange that will continue to grow and take place with Madison Park. The UMass system invited us to come in for a week with our construction programs to do onsite construction projects with Madison Park where the kids stay together overnight and build relationships that way. So this is just the beginning, but we're going to blow it up and make sure that every student has the opportunity for that, that type of interaction.
Kudos to you.
Sad of us.
I, I have to say, you know, I went to New Bedford High. The single greatest tool that I got was the diversity of the population of the school. And just coincidentally, many of the people I became friends with were kids from Akushnet. And, and you know, for them, that was one of the things that they struggled with the most was going from Akushnet to New Bedford High, New Bedford High, just having it be so overwhelming and that diversity. And so I think it's a kudos to you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
So Erin, there is one downside to doing this by Zoom, right? Our new members have not experienced your culinary treats that you usually give us all the time.
I knew you were going to, I knew you were going to say that. And it's funny, we had, we had a surf and turf lobster and filet scheduled for this year. So we'll just, we'll have to make it up to everybody.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
I was waiting for the hot loaf of bread to come out of my computer.
I know.
Yeah, I saw you, Craig. I saw that look on your face, like, like where's the bread? And I was, I thought Bob might have made a joke about it too. He's on his best behavior.
We really appreciate you joining us tonight, Erin, and we appreciate the continued partnership. And for those committee members who don't realize, just another example of a recent project that your students worked on with our district is the video. They made a first day of school video for our teachers. It was a surprise for the first day of school. They interviewed our students. They were onsite a few times a month. And this was all, they finished it right before March, pre-COVID. But the professionalism that I saw in your students and some of those Akushnet students who came back, the pride that you just felt, and it was so great for our students to really interact with them and have that experience. So I look forward to continued partnerships on many projects. I'm sure we have a lot of ideas as we've discussed.
You've been wonderful in that regard too. Thank you for that because you give them an outlet and a voice and a place to shine. And I think anytime we can give students a place to shine, that's why we're in education.
That's right. Thank you so much, Erin.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Erin.
Have a wonderful new year, everybody.
You as well.
You too.
Okay. Does anybody else have any further comments before I move on?
I just had a quick question. Dr. Bailey, are there other schools other than Old Colony that limit the amount of kids from, from Akushnet? Or is it just Old Colony?
So those are the three feeder schools that you saw tonight. The other schools, I believe you do have to apply to like Bishop Stang, Bristol-Aggie. They're private schools. But as long as you're living in Akushnet, you can certainly attend New Bedford High School or Fairhaven, and then Old Colony has the application process. And I know that Old Colony also is similar to the vocational process in New Bedford, right? Where they, those children have to apply for school. And I know there's a huge waiting list. I know Erin is still on, but I, I believe that's correct. You know, the waiting list now.
Just real quick. Yeah, just for clarification's sake, we don't, we will not limit. So if the entire freshman class of Akushnet, let's say, or eighth grade class from Ford were to apply, they would be, they would be evaluated based on five different categories. The primary category is really attendance and that's a really important piece of the puzzle because we don't want to, and it's a blind academic piece too. So it's attendance, academics, discipline, guidance counselor, recommendation. And forgive me, I'm drawing a blank for a moment. Attendance, guidance counselor, recommendation. I drew a complete blank.
Extracurricular?
No. It's. And forgive me, I apologize. I, I want the students to know that if their attendance is strong, that is the preliminary piece that will guide their attendance, their acceptance at Old Colony. And the reason for that is that you can't really garner a vocational education without being there. Right? So we've been hybrid throughout this pandemic with the exception of a week where we had to, where we decided to close down. And we've been, we've had relative success with that. But I think the most important piece of that puzzle is to teach carpentry remotely is a lot more complicated than to do that in person. And if a student's going to learn something like carpentry or electrical or culinary, we need them to take their attendance seriously, right?
Erin, is it the interview?
Yes, thank you so much. It's the interview. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I, I was thinking about what our kids have to do and.
Thank you for the rescue. I so appreciate that. Sometimes you blank out and you just, I don't have that note in front of me and I just.
No, that's okay.
But it is, it's the interview. And so those interviews begin in February, right at the beginning of February. And that will finalize the process for the students who have applied to date. But again, John, no limitation. I don't want anyone to misinterpret that or to feel discouraged. I would encourage the entire eighth grade class to put their name in the hat at every school that they've seen so that they have options. They can always say no, but they can't always backtrack. And that's a really important piece of the puzzle, right? I say to them, I have six children of my own, five daughters and a son. And I say to them all, leave all your options open. That's a really important piece of the puzzle. So I think in their planning, as families plan, it's important to make, to take into consideration leaving their options open.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one more question, Paula. For Erin, is there any? I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Are there any opportunities or any plans in the future to expand Old Colony? Since vocation is blowing up all over the place.
Oh, Sarah, I am so glad you asked that question. We have submitted a statement of interest to the MSBA and we are pursuing expansion. And should we be successful in our pursuit of expansion, you will see added Chapter 74 programs as well. We're in talks with BCC right now through a grant-funded planning process to explore biotech. And we have some of the top biotech experts in the, in the country that we've recruited for an advisory board. We'll also consider something like plumbing and maybe even something in agriculture. If, if we're successful in securing this SOI, if we do secure an SOI, you could see us grow by as many as 100 over a four-year period, is my guess. So we could become a school of 650 or 700, which would allow us to better accommodate the demand for vocational education. Our goal is to take as many kids as we can.
I just think in this day and age, you know, college is important, but on the other hand, vocation is just, in my, in my mind, somebody who's been through a home construction the past two years, it is so hard to find the plumbers, the electricians, you know, the carpenters, all of that. And I just think we need a place for our students that are more hands-on than academic.
Yeah, and to your, to your point, Sarah, we have a student who graduated two, two and a half, 2017. And he is, two years out of high school, he was making $70,000 a year.
Well, I want to tell you that I did hire an Old Colony plumber, I mean electrician. And he, he is making six figures. And in high demand. And I think he's six or seven years out. Not bad.
So, so one of the things we did because of this is we have kids who tell us all the time, I want to start my own company right when I graduate high school. And I said, well, you need a business background as well. So we started what we called the Launch Early Entrepreneurship Program, which allows the kids to take business courses through BCC and earn their associates while they're in high school. So that allows our electricians, our carpenters who want to start their own companies to have a business background prior to graduation. And they'll take things like marketing or management or something that has to do with financial literacy, right? In order to prepare them for the world beyond our walls. And then when they graduate, if they choose to go on and get a bachelor's in business, they're halfway there. So again, I digress. I don't mean to monopolize the time, but I'm passionate about Old Colony. And when you talk, I get so excited about sharing more about who we are. So thank you for the stage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if it's okay with the, the committee, I'm going to move on with my report. All right, so the next thing we have is Personnel Matters. And there has been no change since last month, so there's really nothing new to report. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Middle of the Year Evaluation Update. So this is just a very quick update and you all received in your packets an update, which you saw the goals at the beginning of the year. And what I will do is just highlight where we're at right now, middle of the year. So first goal is to promote ongoing student achievement by ensuring all Akushnet public school students have equitable opportunities to engage in uninterrupted learning experiences. And then if you go down to mid-year update in that column on that report, I will highlight, just to say that, you know, this is complex work to begin with, with the curriculum and teaching and learning. But there's certainly challenges with the teaching and learning during a pandemic. challenges with the teaching and learning during a pandemic. And that's where we've been all year so far. So we're continuing with our goals, with our strategy. Last year, as you know, we had the curriculum audit, so we're continuing to follow through on all of those recommendations. As you know, for many years, Akushnet had outdated curriculum. They did not have any adoption cycles for curriculum. So we really have worked hard to get best research-based curriculum into the hands of our teachers, because our teachers told us they did not have the resources that they needed to be effective. So we couldn't do it all in one year, but we were able to get things such as Envision, like Sales Success Maker. We did the new Student Learning Guides and individual teacher websites. And I will talk more about that in the curriculum update tonight. So we have a blended learning model right now that continues, which combines the digital curriculum platform as well as the in-person platform. And teachers have done a wonderful job in terms of adapting how they do their jobs this year. We've continued doing learning walks. The principals join me in those learning walks in each building. And we're able to give growth-producing feedback, whether it's to the principal, to the teacher. But a lot of times during this pandemic, it's supportive feedback. We're so proud of our staff for all that they're doing right now. And we recognize that they've had to learn a new way of doing things. So in terms of working on curriculum, all the district leaders and school-based leaders have scheduled one-to-one meetings with me. Most of them are weekly, some are biweekly. I continue to participate in the NSIP program, and I will talk more about that in a bit. And we have the Google Classroom platforms, which you're familiar with. Those have all been created this year due to the need for a digital platform. And families have really been able to access individual classroom assignments and the communication through the website, the Wildcat tracks, as well as the Google platform that we have, the Google Classroom. Curriculum apps and assessments are being developed within grade-level meetings, and student progress continues to be monitored. You know, the work hasn't stopped. We still continue to monitor our students with DIBELS, Galileo benchmarks, because our students, you know, we have to figure out where they're at. We know right now that the state is telling us that MCAS will happen this year. It will be modified. We just got notification today, actually. So I'll have an update on that next month. So again, it's not so much a grade, if you will. It's more about where, what do our kids know? What do they need to know? And how do we get them there? So all of these benchmarks are about informing instruction to get our kids to where they need to be. And then teacher leadership has been a big piece in our district this year. We encourage to promote that collegial culture. You know, it's not just the central leadership or the school leadership team. We're all leaders in one way or another, and we all rely on each other. So we really pride ourselves on being that close-knit team. We had John Safier lead a district-wide professional development on collegial culture. He is the founder and president of Research for Better Teaching. He runs a consulting firm in the state of Massachusetts. But he's just very well-known in educational circles, and we were just so fortunate to get him to virtually run a professional development for us. And I'll speak a little bit more about this in a bit, too. We have three teachers who have actually signed on to complete an administrative apprenticeship. So when I first came into the district, we really did not have a bench, so to speak, in terms of people lining up to be administrators. But we have so much talent in the district, and we can see it. And we're constantly encouraging people to build their capacity. And if there is an interest to become an administrator, to work towards that, we want to support those goals of our teachers. So I'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit. The second goal was to develop and implement lessons and activities from the new Superintendent's Induction Program, Year Three, and to build my capacity as an effective leader within the Akushnet Public Schools. So just for the new members, the district invested in an NSIP program. It's offered for all new superintendents. It's a three-year program. It's about $10,000 the investment. And I will say that it is very well worth it. Sometimes it feels like you're taking a college-level class, but I will say that all of the work that we've done has been extremely relevant, practical, and the networking has been wonderful. So that continues. I'm in my last year, this year. It's hard to believe that this is my third year. You know, it seems like just yesterday I was starting. So with the work, we continue with the entry findings, the action steps. Again, even though we're in a pandemic, our teachers are still, while we're staying healthy and safe, we're still moving forward with the vision that we've talked about since the beginning, when we had those initial listening tours, we had our findings. We're still focused on those goals. I participate right now two times a month for NSIP-related meetings. One is the regular meeting. There's about 42 of us in that meeting, plus the coaches. And then the second meeting is a smaller consultancy group where we focus on problems of practice, and that's been really helpful. I continue to attend the professional development that's offered through MAS S and MAS C and anything else that comes my way. And you can see some of the examples I've listed in the report. I collaborated with the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, as well as the Principals, as well as the Director of Student Services, on all of the PD offerings in the district so that we can continue to align strategies. All of the leadership meetings are facilitated for central office, as well as the building leaders by me. I also attend department head meetings for the town of Akushnet, facilitate meetings with the district and community stakeholders. And I think the biggest one this year that's different is we formed, we established a CCR, which is, we call it the COVID Crisis Response Team. And that is a new team that has come together with leaders in the district, nurses in the district, as well as community people, including the Board of Health, the Fire Chief. We recently had a couple of school committee members attend. And we just talk about COVID-related issues. I can tell you that when the pandemic first started, this group got together. And I don't know of any other district that was doing this that has quite the support that our town has given us. But we would actually practice different scenarios so that when a student or a staff person, you know, the scenario, they become positive. What do we do? How do we do the close contacts? So we practiced before anything really happened. We talked about communication. And we've had extremely tight communication with all of those stakeholders in the town as we continue to navigate this ever-evolving situation with COVID. We also have a capital improvement plan that continues to be monitored. As a matter of fact, I believe we have a meeting next week. The new thing with that is that our Director of Facilities will be a big part of that now, since he's been hired last March. He's been doing a fabulous job with, you know, he's able to know right away things that need to get done. And it's a fluid plan. We continue to update it. And we continue to try to utilize time that we see that we have. For example, if teachers are out or we have a vacation and a room needs tiling, we do it during that time while the students are not here. So we really try to take advantage of those times. All right. Let me go to goal number three. Okay. Goal number three, to develop and implement resources that support thriving social and emotional learning experiences, and that's known as SEL. Sorry, my light, hold on. SEL for all students within the Akushnet Public Schools. And we've really had a very proactive approach during this time, during the COVID, starting with the closure last March. I know that our Director of Student Services was extremely instrumental in working with the district-wide clinical team. And I talked about this last year, where we really have utilized our counselors and clinical team from both buildings and really have come together as one solid team. So they continue to work together. And they've had to shift and adapt, just like our teachers have had to do, to best support our students and our families. So this year, they've been doing some classroom-based services delivered by the Guidance and School Adjustment Counselors. They do whole-group lessons. So I think the difference this year is it's not just referral-based on students who may need that SEL. It's been so proactive that all kids are receiving really good information and life skills right now into the schedule. So topics such as anger management, cyberbullying, bullying, social skills. I know at the elementary school, they've done things on feelings and emotions. But they've done these consistent lessons, and they've really focused on building relationships, which is key to everything that we do. I know that they also provide office hours to parents who may be struggling at this time with issues at home. So those office hours have been available to provide those emotional supports. Everybody's dealing with different situations in these times, loss, anxiety, things like that. So they've been wonderful. And then on Wednesdays, they do their remote groups. So kids are still accessing the counselors and having access to those groups on Wednesdays. I know that Aaron Polansky talked about the importance of attendance, and we have a strong focus on that as well in this district. So our guidance staff has been an integral part this year to monitor our student attendance, both in-school attendance and those students who are logging in from home. And they're able to see if someone's not logging in, they're able to make a referral to get that family the assistance. We continue to partner with the community agencies that I've listed there. And we also continue our PBS activities. I mean, we've continued really everything and enhanced it. It might look a little different. For example, we had a virtual recognition of our students for PBIS awards. But we're still sharing that with students, even if we have to do it virtually. And goal number four is to continue to provide a safe and healthy learning environment that prioritizes every Akushnet Public Schools' community member during the global health pandemic. So this has been, obviously, a strong focus because we're in this pandemic. And I say this constantly to our staff that there's no playbook on the pandemic. We've had to learn and figure out things as we've went along, but we're learning together. So we've really focused on making sure that all of our students and staff have appropriate PPE, including the face coverings. You'll notice if you do come into our buildings, there's signage everywhere to remind people to social distance and wear those face coverings. We also have Plexiglas that's been placed in different offices. One of the regulations was that our nursing offices had to have a separate area for students or staff who may display COVID symptoms. So we actually, at the elementary school, had to create a whole new nursing office, which required a whole new Plexiglas wall. And people got it together. I didn't see many people taking much time off over the summer to be sure that all of these things were in place for the school year. Our school nurses are provided with, obviously, additional PPE, including face shields, gowns. So we have a strict cleaning protocol that in between our cohorts on Wednesdays, there's cleaning that's done, as well as on Fridays or Saturdays, so that there's a deeper cleaning. And there's always a deeper cleaning when somebody is, when we're notified that somebody is a positive individual for COVID. We notify our maintenance and custodial crew, and they do a deep clean of the area. So Wednesdays has been a very big training day for us, which has been very valuable, because our staff really did need to learn a lot of new technology. We also had a year where, you know, we were learning a lot of new curriculum, digital platforms. And, you know, luckily, we got it just in time, because we really needed those digital platforms due to the pandemic. And then anytime we have updated COVID guidelines, they're trained in that, because, as you know, it's been constantly changing as we go along. I attend weekly DESI trainings and meetings that the Commission of Education runs, as well as doctors attended, attorneys. Our district physician has been consulted and updated as needed. So we're constantly getting new information about learning to lead during a pandemic and the most up-to-date information. I continue to meet regularly with the ATA president and survey staff regarding how they're feeling, how the teaching and learning is going during the pandemic. And I'm so happy that the focus groups will continue to be an inclusive process. Just to update you on that, Dr. Maestis has said that he has started the focus groups, and they're going well. So that's just another inclusive way of getting people's voices heard during this time. I've already talked about the CCR team. We had an MOA, a memorandum of agreement that was negotiated with our ATA. And I just, you know, kudos to our teaching staff, because a couple of weeks ago, DESI put out some new regulations regarding structured learning time. And I believe I put that in your packet tonight, a report. Every district received a report. But we had to fill out the number of hours that our teachers were live-streaming, the number of hours that they were getting synchronous and asynchronous instruction. And Akushnet really started that from day one. When our kids came back in October and we started that phased-in hybrid model, our teachers were trained to do the live instruction. We've gotten, and again, during this pandemic, we're also turning us, we're transitioning into a one-to-one district. So as you know, I recently informed you that we had a shipment of about 450 Chromebooks come in over the Christmas break. And I know that this Friday, the kindergarten and first graders will all receive their Chromebook. And next week, the rest of second, third, and fourth graders will be receiving their Chromebooks. So when you think about all of these things that we've had to do in the midst of a pandemic, I want to give a huge shout-out to our team that, you know, they've worked tirelessly to get all of this done for our families and our students. And so the teachers' union, again, we have the MOA, and they were really reasonable and cooperative. And I thank them for that, because Akushnet is doing quite well. You saw from the report that I included in tonight's informational packet that Akushnet was cleared. As a matter of fact, our hours exceed the minimum requirements that DESI requires. Many districts right now, even local districts, are struggling to change their model, because they are not providing their students with enough online time, live streaming. We've also had to repurpose staff because of the pandemic to do what's best for our students. So for example, we had two computer teachers who were taken out of their roles as computer teachers and really repurposed to focus on staff training and staff support and student support in the area of technology. They've been hugely instrumental in facilitating our Wednesday PDs in technology. And they continue to work very collaboratively with all of our teachers. And they get into especially the younger grades to get those kids up and running with the technology. Because we knew early on that there was a very good chance that our students may have had to go remote, and we wanted our students to be prepared. Other specialists were repurposed based on their certification. So we polled a couple of specialists who had some early childhood certifications. So we added two kindergarten and two first-grade classrooms, so that we can get all of the youngest students in, because we know last spring, they weren't as successful with remote learning as our older students were. We got them in at least four days a week. And we'd love to do it with second grade and up, as we have the room. But we were able to do it with K and 1, which was huge. It was really, really positive. So that is my update. I think we've done a lot in the short time, and given the fact that we're working in very uncharted territory. But it's been busy. We've been communicating ongoing with families around the COVID issues. And I've gotten a lot of positive emails from families who have been really understanding of everything. So does anybody have any questions or comments?
Well, Dr. Bailey, thank you for your update. And, you know, it's always just impressive to hear what you and the entire team is doing to collaborate. to hear what you and the entire team is doing to collaborate and align and make the school year the best it can be in this really, really challenging time. So it's great to hear everything that's being done. I'm super impressed, and kudos to you and everyone at the district for your leadership.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions, but committee, any questions?
No, okay.
All right. Thanks.
All right, I'm gonna go on to the next thing, which is the curriculum update. Okay, so this report was prepared by Carrie Stofel, and obviously, she's not here, so I'm gonna review that for her tonight. But I think it's important for the committee to understand her role, and, you know, she had every intent to give you an update around this time. So the first, I'm not gonna read it, you know, you've certainly had time to review it, but the first section of her report, that first paragraph, gives you an idea of some of her responsibilities. And just to highlight, I mean, basically, her job is, she's responsible for teaching and learning in the district, and that is the crux, that is the meat and potatoes of what we do in the district. So that director of curriculum instruction and assessment has a huge, hugely important job in the district. She's a member of the school leadership team. She supervises the teaching staff in implementation and assessment of the curricula program, especially this year as it relates to the hybrid learning environment. She's able to evaluate curriculum, classroom instructional strategies, assessment practices, and always with the aim to increase student engagement and growth. She also manages all of the grants for the district, or that position does. So the first thing that she highlighted in her report is the reopening of schools during the COVID-19, and that was a huge task, right? We didn't take any time off in the summertime. We were having multiple meetings a week to figure out, but basically, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education said to all districts, you have to come up with three models, an in-person model, a hybrid model, and a remote learning model. And we had to be ready to implement all three models. And we also had to be ready to talk about how our special populations or our high-needs populations would be serviced. So that's all in our reopening plan, but she was the one, Ms. Stofel was the one who really authored that document, really collaborating with all of the leaders to get that done and the teachers. And this was done through surveys, meetings, school committee presentations, and then the next level she talked about was, you know, I know she was happy to hear that we were gonna have focus groups coming up that the school committee was supportive of. So the communication, you know, she said the Acushnet Public Schools was in great need of a dynamic platform, and, you know, I've already talked about the fact that, you know, we did not have any updated curriculum. You already know from the curriculum audit that we didn't have any high-level research-based programs, so we really needed to do, you know, we didn't have a year to waste, and even though through the pandemic, we wanted to support our teachers as best we could, that's why we were very supportive of that Wednesdays for training because we knew with all of the things on our plate, we truly needed that time. So we also knew that we had to strengthen what we did in the spring. As you recall, on March 13th, schools abruptly closed, and we had to figure it out with everybody else in the world. But we were definitely more thoughtful, and hopefully, I know that a lot of parents have commented on the difference between what they're seeing now with teaching and learning versus the spring. And that's due to this position. You know, she really, Ms. Stofel, I have to give her credit because in the short time she was in the district, she really took the lead on all of these things. She actually created a site with an interactive calendar that families could easily log on to and keep track of their student schedules. Also, she created two sites to build on so that every teacher, over the summertime, she worked with another teacher to make sure that every teacher had an individualized teacher website that their students would be able to access. And then, of course, we worked on our Google Classrooms, getting those up and running, the digital curriculum with all of the new curriculum. She worked on student learning guides. That was, you know, again, that was something that our students would be able to talk about what they were doing and also share with families because that was some feedback that we received from the spring, that it was really hard for families to understand what was going on and what they had to do with the packets. So that has been hugely helpful for many. She worked on the newly adopted curriculum, the hybrid instructional practices, as well as assessments, and she also started to do a monthly newsletter. We did some community outreach this year. We had two Zoom COVID global health pandemic meetings, if you will, that we wanted to share with the community on, you know, our website and how the teaching and learning was going to be rolled out, and she was a big part of presenting and preparing those And the result of those meetings actually led to this opportunity for three of our teachers who worked very closely with Ms. Stofel to start an administrative apprenticeship that we've applied through DESI, and it's an official thing that they will be earning their administrative licenses. So that will continue with Ms. Stofel. She's agreed to take that on with them, which has been wonderful, and I believe she meets with them weekly. So we have this to look forward to, and we also have, I know they're planning to do a technology families Zoom meeting coming this spring, so we definitely have that to look forward to. And I think when you see that, you'll be truly impressed with what they've been able to accomplish so far, and this is all work towards their apprenticeship. As you know, we needed to come up with a fully remote model for tech. We chose TECA. You know, it was decided, many districts were utilizing TECA, and unfortunately, it was a very bumpy beginning for TECA. I think TECA was probably very overwhelmed with the amount of districts and students that were joining TECA. So we had to do a lot of transitioning. We had many students return to the district once they figured out TECA wasn't for them initially, and Ms. Stofel really worked with those families to make sure that those kids were getting their education. As far as the curriculum, you know, we talked a lot, a little about it earlier, but again, not having any updated curriculum, we were able to bring in quite a new thing, quite a few new things this year. So in VISIONS, math, which was K to 8 this year, which was huge. My View and My Perspective Reading, 5 to 8, and Amplify Science, 5 to 8. Success Maker, math, and Success Maker Reading, which is intervention programs, were also purchased, and there's all digital platforms that go along with that. That is quite a lot. That's, that is a complex task in itself in a normal year. Now we're adding this to COVID. We're adding a one-to-one initiative with our computers, and we have people doing it all with a smile because they know this is what's right for kids and families, and we're continuing to try to support them with our Wednesday trainings, and the trainings have been well worth it because I think that you'll agree the quality of instruction has improved, and we're still continuing to strengthen it as we move forward. So there's still a need for more curriculum, and that's why we continue to ask for money in that town meeting article, if you will, but I know that we still, there's still a need for reading, writing, science, and social studies at the elementary level, as well as social studies and writing at the middle school level. And she talks about professional development in her report, which was a big part of her job. You know, as you recall, we had the first 10 days of school that was all PD. She organized the whole thing with all of the leaders, created this elaborate website schedule for faculty who still use it today. Everything's outlined for the year, links to get into these webinars and trainings, and we continue to update that as we continue to update our PD. So as you know, I mentioned John Safia earlier. She was the one who coordinated getting him into our district, and, you know, she is the one who really worked closely, to give her credit, with the three teachers who are now looking to become administrators. And again, she's mentoring, coaching, and I'm so delighted that she's agreed to stay on and work with them on a weekly basis. So they've already established log of hours, their vision. They will actually be presenting at a future school committee meeting, so I look forward to seeing them do that. But they've already presented to me, and I am just totally amazed with the amount of work that they've put into, and I think you will be pleasantly surprised at how much work goes on behind the scenes for our teachers to really roll out what they're rolling out each and every day for our students on a digital platform. And then the last section, she mentions again that she, this position manages all aspects of all of the grants, and this year, we had additional grants because of COVID, which is the CARES funding grant. I'm sure that Mrs. Flynn will be updating us on the grants, but that was also a big part of her job. So I thought it was important that the committee get an update on the curriculum from Ms. Stofel, but you will be getting further updates, as I alluded to earlier, because we have many people who are already signed on to presenting at future school committee meetings with some of the great work that's been going on. So does anybody have any questions?
The only question I have is, I know it hasn't been that long, and we have the holidays, but is there any progress in terms of starting to look for a replacement on that?
Yep. So, let's see. These are all of the applicants. So we've posted on School Spring, and we are going through a paper screening process now, and we will be getting together a committee, which school committee obviously will be invited to participate, as well as our staff. And administrators will have a selected representation of our buildings, and we will get those interviews scheduled. So we are right on track with the interview process.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
I had reached out to you, copy Jen specifically on that position, and I guess my questions were in regards to, is that something that we should evaluate from a position standpoint? Is this something that we should, because this is a lot of work that somebody's doing, whether those, the things that Ms. Stofel was doing was delegated from other positions or if we're able to do them now because of the position? I think this was kind of a temporarily funded position for the town, and I just felt like it was something worth evaluating from the standpoint of, you know, could we make this a more long-term position? I mean, we're hiring for, you know, to fill this position, and I feel like anybody that we might be hiring might already have one foot out the door, knowing that it could be, you know, potentially temporary, like, you know, funding may not come for this position to exist in perpetuity, and if we think it's important enough as a district to continue with this position, I mean, this should be something I think, you know, should come up as part of a discussion. But I'll defer to you, but I mean, I don't know what your thoughts would be.
So thank you, Mr. Teves. This position is funded. It has been approved and built into the budget, so it's something that we will build in future budgets. So obviously, we want to attract the best of the best candidates for this position. It was unfortunate. Ms. Stofel's departure was certainly earlier than expected. The work that she did in six months was amazing, in my opinion. We don't want someone to leave after six months, obviously. We want to retain them, so we are going through that exit interview process that we have talked about in previous meetings, but it is not a temporarily funded position. It's a position that is permanently funded. It was a position that was approved last year. I don't know if other committee members want to comment on this, but this is, it's not an issue for funding at all. It's something that all districts have a curriculum person and someone, I mean, like I said, it's the crux, it's the meat and potatoes of what we do, the teaching and learning, it's the most important thing we do. We need someone to head that up, and we know that what we were doing prior to this position was not working. We had met with our feeder school high schools. They talked about some gaps that our students were experiencing, and just like they talked about tonight where they're getting the kids ready for the world, we have to get our kids ready for the high school, and we've been able to work very closely with the feeder schools on what do we need to change. We worked very closely with the Department of Education. We've gotten reports from them, we had curriculum audits and everything. This is prior to my arrival in the district. Everything came up as, you know, not having enough focus on curriculum. So we've definitely had a strong focus under my leadership. I consider myself an instructional leader, as all of our leaders are instructional leaders, and this is definitely something that I believe is needed and necessary, but it's definitely funded, and it's not temporary. But other people might want to chime in.
I just, I just had a follow-up to that, which was, you know, I think another part of that might be considering the compensation. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that they're responsible for, and then, and then she probably felt like, you know, oh, well, we needed to take a detour away from what I really wanted to focus on and what her vision was of that position to kind of, you know, dive ahead with the endemic plans, right, reopening? And I don't know, I just, I feel like the job description's a little bit of a bear, you know? There's a lot there, and, you know, compensation's a big part of retention. And so, you know, I just thought from a position standpoint, they're just, if this was gonna be something that was gonna be really important for the district, I mean, we've got to really think about the position as a whole. And I just, it blows my mind, and this is from the very first time I ever talked with you, you know, it blows my mind that it's, that it's this difficult to get funding for a curriculum in this town. That's insane to me. So I, I don't know, I'm just, I feel like there's, you know, we've got somebody that I thought was, you know, pretty well-qualified to do, you know, that position and came in, and then six months later, it's like, oh my God, we're starting over. And I just feel like that's gonna repeat itself.
So I want to say, like, it's an opportunity. It's unfortunate, but this, this is the educational world. This happens in all districts, unfortunately. It was disappointing. We'll find out more once that exit interview is discussed, but we want to retain our people so that exit interview information hopefully will help avoid those things. I will tell you that this committee fought really hard for the $90,000 position, and people thought that was outrageous, but when you look at other districts and the pay scale that they're getting, curriculum directors in a lot of districts are making six figures. So, but she took the position, you know, again, there were some personal issues going on, and this is what happens, but, you know, I will tell you that our principals, our leaders in the district are very committed to continuing the work. The work is continuing, and that's the great thing about a good leader, is the work goes on even when they're not here. So the fact that, I know that people are meeting about this work, I know it warms my heart to know that this is important work to people. We're doing our best because we don't have a full-time person right now, so we're all working together to do the best we can right now without that person.
I think maybe there's a couple of things that we could do, Paula, and I think, you know, hearing from Ms. Stofel in terms of her view and whether there are any modifications to the role or things that could be done from her point of view that would make it more appealing to a candidate, right, might be interesting, and obviously, you know, you would have to evaluate that and so on, but that might be one way. But to John's point, I think, you know, I think we need to look closely at the pay scale and determine if there's any flexibility and have that discussion, and maybe the answer's gonna be, we can't do it. But at the end of the day, I think sometimes we say we want the best people, but we have to stack that up against what are the other districts paying because those two things could be in conflict, and it's just not reality-based to think that we're gonna pay somebody 80% of other districts or whatever the number is, and that we're gonna get the best people all the time, and so maybe there's other things. And so maybe there's other things we can do to be creative, but I, I think we have to have a real discussion about, about that. And I, I think it's a very important role. And to John's point, I don't want us as a district to end up in the same situation six months from now where we're going backwards because we're continuously, we're, we're losing the progress we made because we're continuing to backfill a role. We've got to have a real discussion about, can we pay a little bit more to try to lock somebody in? Because in the long run, it's going to cost us more to have to keep bringing new people in anyway. So, you know.
I can do some research again on that. We can certainly talk about it in Budget Subcommittee coming up as we prepare for the budget. But ultimately, that is the committee that decides on the budget.
Yeah, fair, fair enough. I just think we have to, to have that discussion and really ask ourselves where, you know, from a priority perspective, what's important, right? And, and have those trade-offs and have that discussion.
Paula, just to, Jen, just to chime in from being on the Budget Subcommittee, I just think it's, I think it's important, let's find out why she left. It might not be the money because they are presented with the salary ahead of time and the job description, and they aren't going through two or three interviews. So I think, I think Acushnet sets good expectations on, on what they need to do for the position. So I think that's really important to find out why she left. And is it the money? Was it the over, was it overwhelming for her to do the job before we jump into, you know, more meetings of, should we change the job description? So I just want to say that from the-
I agree with that. You know, I think we're, we're making an assumption that money's a factor, could or could be or couldn't be. And everyone's differently, place a higher priority, some people place a higher priority on that, and we should, that's fair.
That's what makes Acushnet special.
We should look at it from every perspective and try to make sure that we feel like we're, we're putting together the best possible scenario we can for whoever that candidate is, to try to make sure that we can get somebody and retain, if we find the right person that we want to retain, that we can retain them, right? So.
That's right.
Paula, I just have one more question. With the curriculum, I know we're still looking for writing social studies and science curriculums. Are we sort of not pausing, but not rolling really hard with that until we find a new person?
Well, we're basically continuing with the vision. I'm hopeful that we'll have somebody in place, at least by the beginning of the next school year, realistically, but it would be great if we could find someone this year. But to be honest, to roll out this amount of curriculum in one year-
Right.
-for teachers is not realistic. So even in a normal year, the amount of curriculum that we have rolled out, we have to give our teachers credit because they've taken on a lot this year, hugely flexible, adapting, adapting to the new role, this digital platform. So I don't think our teachers, I don't think it would be fair to put one more thing on their plate at this point. And I would only begin to roll that out when we're ready. And we will work very closely with our teachers when that happens. So at the middle school level, we work with the content teachers on that specific content and we will figure that out as we move forward. But we hope to work with a curriculum director together. But, you know, the work will continue. It's just when people are ready. And right now, I feel like we've got to continue strengthening where we're at. We have so much on our plate this year. I'm so proud of what we've been able to accomplish during a pandemic. Like I said, this curriculum work is complex in itself without a pandemic. You throw a pandemic in the mix and it's a tornado of everything. And the way people are managing is phenomenal. So kudos to the Acushnet educators for their efforts during this pandemic with the teaching and learning. I know it has not been easy. It's been a very stressful time, but we're a team and we're going to get through it together. And that's where we're coming at it. So, so yeah, the work will continue, Sarah, in terms of getting that curriculum. We're not going to stop looking at it, but it's going to be when people are ready.
Gotcha, gotcha. And just to, I know I bring this up every time we talk about curriculum, but the eighth grade math, have we slowly moved to where we need to be in competition with other high schools?
Yep. So we, last year or the year before, we talked about the fact that our feeder schools were telling us and informing us that, as you recall, our Acushnet students weren't having the same opportunities that some of the other children, students were having because they didn't receive algebra, right? So we have worked really closely with those feeder schools to see what our kids needed. We did change some of the coursework in the eighth grade. I want to give a shout out to our eighth grade math teachers because, again, that had to be a change. And we know that this advanced work is not for all, but for those students who can do the work, we should have, we should have the same opportunity for Acushnet students as the rest, whatever high school they enter into. We want them to have whatever opportunity they want. So if they want to take advanced math, they should get those same course offerings that, you know, other kids get from the other towns. I believe that is now happening since we changed that. And I know we had Dr. Roy, who is a math expert, her background is strong background in math, worked really closely with Karen Cavalo, who is our eighth grade math teacher, who they visited Fairhaven High School. I mean, we've done a lot of collaboration to make sure where we, we are where we need to be, and we'll just continue to strengthen that.
Thank you.
Dr. Bailey? In the middle school, do, do we do groupings, like enrichment groupings, kind of, with the, I, I don't even know. Is it fifth grade, sixth grade, maybe even just seventh or eighth? Do we group the kids into different ability levels?
So I believe for the math, there is some grouping based on the need for algebra and that more advanced math in the eighth grade. But I can, I don't want to misspeak at all. So if that is something you want me to look into, I'm more than happy to get back to you on that. But in terms of advanced classes, no, they're not tracked like that. It's more grade levels and just teaching to the standards at this-
I'm just, I'm just thinking, I was thinking of that because I was listening to the New Bedford High thing and, and like Mr. Hood, I went there and, and if you were tracking in, in kind of those upper levels, I mean, you got the experience that you wanted out of it. And I was, you know, taking the AP courses and stuff like that. And, and I, I mean, we were, we were kind of grouped and tracked. In fact, I was, the enrichment program started in fourth grade in the bedroom.
Yeah.
And then, and then certainly in, in, well, back then it was just seventh and eighth grade in, in whatever we call it, not middle school, what the heck do we call it? Junior high school. But at least, you know, at least in, in seventh and eighth grade, same thing. You know, you, you were kind of put into-
Yep.
You know, different groupings and, and like, so, you know, seventh grade, I was doing pre-algebra, algebra in eighth grade, that sort of thing. And the reading and writing was, was kind of grouped that way too. And I'm just, I'm just curious if that's something that our district has, has looked at or considered? Because that might be the thing that, you know, I, I don't know. I think, I think there's just probably a subset of students, probably in every grade that is capable of, or not capable, I shouldn't say capable, but is in need of being challenged. And they're just not. And, and I think that in itself might, you know, make it a better transition into some of these high schools where they're going to suddenly be, you know, tracked and grouped that way. So I, I don't know if there's a way to challenge the top end of, of the students that, that are in Acushnet and really, you know, drive that, you know, drive that, the, the curriculum, you know, forward. I don't know, I mean, that's a bigger project, obviously, from, from a school standpoint. And I would like kind of an educator's opinion on that.
I think it's a perfect interview question for our new Director of Curriculum, right? To talk about how they would do advanced learning or challenge our students because that is a need right now. I will tell you that there has been a stronger focus at the middle school, especially in terms of eighth graders. Joyce Cardoza, the person who presented from New Bedford High School tonight, I worked closely with her. Prior to the pandemic, we offered our students dual enrollment, which means that as an eighth grader, our eighth grade students would have the opportunity to be bused over to New Bedford High School to take advanced classes at the high school level, ELA, math and possibly science, but at least ELA and math. We did not have a strong interest in that, at, at the first time around that we tried to offer it to students. But we are working closely with our partner districts so that, you know, if we don't have the programs, perhaps they do. And they want to be extremely inclusive of Acushnet students. I know at the elementary level, we sent our, I think it was fourth graders to C-Lab, which was a wonderful experience for our students. Again, this is pre-COVID. So whenever we can partner to do some of those advanced learning activities, I am all in favor of it. I think it's a, a bigger issue that we need to explore. But I agree that children need to be challenged and that's what makes teaching so complex is, you know, teachers have, let's say, 20 kids in front of them and there are 20 different students at 20 different levels and 20 different situations. And that's what makes teachers so special with the magic that they're able to do each and every day to get the kids what they truly need and, you know-
I guess, I guess, yeah, I guess that was my point, was I don't, I don't feel like differentiation is necessarily enough. Because it's just, it's, it's kind of impossible to do exceptionally every time. And so I think, I think that the differentiation would come in a, in a much, I'd say, shorter variance. If, if you, if we had groupings of, of kids, certainly, I think, you know, it, it would be, I don't know, I don't know how I feel about, you know, the, like an enrichment program in grade three or four or something like that. But certainly by grade seven or eight, I think the, the kids probably have a good sense of where, you know, they should be. And, and I just think from a teaching perspective, if we want to prepare our kids for, you know, to compete in high school, you know, we're, we're not doing them any, you know, any good by, by not preparing them, I guess, is, you know what I mean? Like, I, I just, I just feel like personally, that grouping the kids, giving, you know, kind of the, the, at least the top, you know, kids that are, that are kind of capable of taking on that kind of challenge or, or need that kind of challenge, could be able to, you know, the, the teaching stuff could be able to group them in a way where they could, they could challenge them and deliver that curriculum in a different way or, or in a, in a higher capacity and prepare them to be top, you know, students in high school as well. That's just my thoughts.
No, I think it's, thank you for sharing that. Does anybody else have anything on the curriculum update? All right. So I'm going to move forward. I have one other matter that I did email you about that we're going to add to the agenda tonight. And it's regarding the FF-CRA benefits. And just to review for everyone, the federal government passed the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which is known as the FF-CRA, which requires employers to provide sick and family leave benefits to certain COVID-related reasons. But the benefits expired December 31st, 2020. So even though this benefit has technically expired, districts, local districts have the opportunity, if we want to extend those to the employees through the end, at least until the end of March, if not the end of the school year. I would be looking to have a discussion tonight about possibly extending these benefits through the end of March. There's two buckets that these benefits, if you think of it, one bucket is quarantining or those staff members who may become deemed a close contact or test positive for COVID. And the other one would be for childcare purposes that they need a leave. So, so the benefit's a total of 12 weeks of emergency leave. Some of the leave may be paid. Other times employees must exhaust their vacation and personal time prior to utilizing the FF-CRA benefit. And it just really depends on what the reason is, whether it's quarantining or whether it's childcare. So for an example, an employee can receive up to 80 hours paid emergency sick leave to quarantine if they test positive for COVID or are deemed a close contact. If an employee needs to be out of work due to childcare, they are allowed to access the first two weeks as paid emergency leave benefit at two-thirds of their pay. Once that is exhausted, the employee will need to use any available vacation or personal time. Once the vacation and personal time is exhausted, the employee can tap into the second part of the FF-CRA option, which is the Emergency Family Medical Leave Act. And this means that they would be entitled to receive two-thirds of their pay for any additional time up to 10 weeks. So what I decided to do was poll superintendents on our listserv just to see what other districts were doing regarding voluntarily extending this benefit. And so it was an informal poll and it was very split. Some superintendents said, yes, we're continuing with the FF-CRA benefits, no change. Others said, yes, we're continuing with the FF-CRA benefits for quarantining only, no childcare benefits. And then others said, no, we are not extending this benefit. So when I looked into it further, some of the larger districts have a really tough time paying for it, right? I mean, it's probably the costs are over a million dollars for a large district to actually do this. So I ran a report of how many people in our district have actually utilized this benefit. And I, I want to be clear here. This absolutely is not a benefit to the district to extend it. This is a benefit to our employees. I will say that our employees have not abused this in any way. So out of all of our employees, we had 40 employees access either one or the other or both, whether it's the quarantine or the childcare piece of the FF-CRA. Only one person in the district has completely exhausted their FF-CRA time. We have 11 people who have exhausted the quarantine portion of the FF-CRA and they won't be able to tap into that again. So then we looked and said, okay, out of those 40 employees, how many of those employees? So if we just said 40 employees, what would the, the large cost be to the district? So, let's see. And that would be just over $60,000. So what we decided to do was look at the list again and say, okay, we've obviously budgeted for their salaries to be paid. How many of those people actually require a substitute teacher? And actually it came out to half. So out of the 40 people, only 20 people required a substitute. So when you matched up the money, it, it cut it in half, basically just over $31,000. So, and I believe it's less than that because we utilize our building-based subs first. So when somebody calls in sick, we have two building-based subs hired at each building and we started that this year. Those folks are accessed first before our front-end, frontline management, substitute management system will bring on a new sub. So in many of these cases, the 100 days that were needed, a lot of times it was already a person who are paying the position to cover it. So it is definitely less than $31,000, but it would be a very time-consuming process to go through and figure out who's sub for who and really get an exact amount. So I just wanted to get a general idea for the committee tonight. I believe that we're a small enough district that this is a benefit we could possibly discuss, giving to our employees at least through the end of March. The surge is happening now. The numbers are quite high in the community. It's nobody's fault that we're in this god-awful pandemic. You know, I'd love to hear what folks think about extending the FF-CRA benefits to our teachers. And again, I just want to remind you the great work that they're doing and that Acushnet teachers have started this work since day one. And many districts right now have to kind of backpedal to figure it out and come up with a new model. So our teachers are live streaming. I just think this is, again, not a benefit to the district, to be totally honest. This is a benefit to our employees. It's something that I spoke to Mrs. Flynn about to be sure that we can fiscally accommodate this if we were to extend it. And her response was yes. Just curious if we can have a discussion about this tonight because it ended, we've got a couple of people right now in limbo because we weren't sure if we were- Because ended, we've got a couple of people right now in limbo because we weren't sure if we were extending or not. But because I believe this is a budgetary issue, this is something that the school committee should vote on. So I'd be interested to hear what folks think about this particular issue of extending the FF-CRA benefits for our employees.
Paula, if we were to extend it, could we commit that, you know, at each meeting moving forward, that we would, maybe, Kristen, we could track this and add it to the budget, just to keep an eye on it, to make sure that it's something that we, that's under control, that's not getting crazy, so that we're just kind of touching base on it?
Yes, certainly, could certainly do that. I mean, I was able to pull this report within one day to give us an idea of the number of days used and the number and the amount of money, the cost associated with it. And again, I think we're very, oh my God, my light again, hold on. Okay, I guess I'm not moving enough in this office, the lights went out. You know, we're small enough that we can fiscally handle this right now. I believe it would be the right thing to do, given the pandemic that we are in. And like I said, I don't believe we have employees that are taking advantage or abusing this in any way. And if that was the case, that would certainly be a drift. But yes, you can definitely, if we were to do that, have an update, a monthly update.
I think that's a good idea. I'm in favor of extending it through March. But like what Ron said, you know, just giving us the updates per month to see if, you know, maybe it is being taken advantage of as we get into the early spring or anything like that, you know, we want to make sure we keep an eye on that.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm absolutely supportive of extending it.
Does anybody else have any commentary about this? It is really an important issue right now. You know, one concern would be that, for example, if somebody didn't want to use their earned time and they were deemed a close contact, we would hope that most people would not do this. But there would be people who would not want to use their time, and they could potentially show up to work, putting others at risk. So I just feel like.
Totally, I'm totally supportive of it, you know, I think, you know, if we, if we go back to that discussion we had a few minutes ago about retaining people, I'm not suggesting this is the be-all and end-all, but I think this is a small thing that we can do to maybe show some appreciation for the folks that are also taking a risk in teaching our kids. And I think it makes a lot of sense to extend it, but to also just monitor it and make sure we're checking in and be responsible.
Absolutely, thank you. Does anybody else have any commentary? Because I would ask for a vote on this.
I'm on board as well. I'm just, like people have said, I'd just like to keep an eye on what it is going to cost, you know, month to month. I mean, you're budgeting or estimating around $60,000 that it would cost. I mean, if that comes up to $100,000, do we stop the program? Or do we have the funds to offset that if it does run up to that amount of money?
So just to clarify, the initial amount that I gave you was $60,000 for the 40 employees that took, that utilized the FF-CRA. And that money was already budgeted for their salaries, so they were still getting paid while utilizing that emergency benefit. But when we actually broke it down and see who needed substitutes, it was half of that. And then we know it's even less than the $31,000 because we know our building-based subs are first in line to sub for them. It's only when we go beyond two subs in each building that we pay for a substitute teacher. So again, you know, knowing the, I know that Mrs. Flynn is going to review the budget today, and you'll see, I would not be recommending this if I didn't feel that we could fiscally handle this. But we're small enough, and our staff has been responsible enough, that to me, this is a benefit, we should continue at least until the end of March, and then reevaluate it at the end of March.
Okay, can I please request a motion to extend the FF-CRA benefit through March 31st? And at that time, will be reviewed.
I'm moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Chav?
In.
I'm sorry?
I will abstain.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hood?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Before we move on to Mrs. Flynn's report, I just want to circle back to delegation just to see if we've had any comments coming in. Spennies, if you could just take a peek at that.
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, over to you, Ms. Flynn.
Okay, thank you. Before we get started, I just wanted to let Mr. Hood and the rest of the committee know the numbers for our high schools. I know you had asked that earlier tonight. So as of our first tuition bill at For Haven High School, we were billed for 244 students. And New Bedford High School, I just received it today, 19 students. And I heard the Old Colony superintendent mentioned 144. I don't have those numbers because we don't pay a tuition bill to Old Colony, but those are, that's how it breaks out this year. So, and I too was very happy to hear from Raquel, the New Bedford Whaler, as a former New Bedford Whaler. I'm very proud to say that I was educated here in Acushnet and at New Bedford High, and both school districts certainly served me well. So it was really nice to see a student from New Bedford that's doing so well. So hopefully, we can get that 19 Acushnet students up there. When I first started, there was probably about 220 students attending New Bedford High. So hopefully, we can keep getting it up there. So anyways, on to my report. I will try to be brief with the information. You have it all in your pocket, just updates really on the budget. Actually, quite a bit has changed since I published this report last week. So I'm going to note, I'm going to let you know about that now rather than wait till next month because there were some significant changes, I would say, in the last day or so. So on the budget update to the school committee, on your report, it was anticipating a surplus of 300 and almost $86,000. A couple of things have changed since then. And right now, the surplus heading into June, based on all of those accounts, is 291,000. So that's a big difference, huh? So one of which is a out-of-district tuition and transportation that I just became known, aware of this, just in the past few days. So that was roughly about $60,000 of that. We also, I did allude to the fact that we were going to move some expenditures from the CVRF grant because it's now going to be extended past 12/30. So some of the supplies that we bought with that grant, I'm going to try to get reimbursed from the town's money for that, and that'll free up our grant money to be able to continue to pay for our building-based subs, our custodians, and our TECA tuitions. So that's impacting that bottom line. So that was about, additional expenditures was about $17,000. And we also had some, we had some transportation, some tuition. We moved the CVRF expenditures. And since then, in the past few days, we've also purchased some more items, the COVID-19 items that I'll review with those. So we purchased about $16,000 more because those funds that we thought were expiring, the towns' funds on December 30th, those two have been extended. So, you know, I'll have a more complete report for you in February, but when I saw it had changed so significantly since this publication, I just wanted to make you aware of it so there were no big surprises come in February. So again, right now, the overall surplus that I'm looking at is about $290,000. And, you know, that's still, that's still a very healthy amount. That's generally around the amount that we're heading into the end of the fiscal year with. So, you know, this year is totally different, so the best thing to do is just keep an eye on it all the time. So that is where we're at with the budget update. You can look through some of the different accounts. You see that I added the school choice tuition. That also affected the overall surplus in school choices. You know, in normal times, students can attend other schools other than Acushnet than they can go to Old Rochester on school choice. And that's assessed from the Department of Ed to us at five, usually $5,000 per student. Those figures aren't publicized until December. So we really don't know until December how our budgeted amount, based on the students we knew we had at school choice last year, was going to shake out to this year. So we're down about $21,000 different from the budget. So those are some of the differences. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions about that right now before I move on. Okay. So you also have the COVID-19 expenditures. That's just the running tally of all the things that we've spent due to the COVID-19 pandemic, broken down by where they're spent from. The ESSR grant and the CVRF grant, Dr. Bailey mentioned two new grants. And those have been additional grants that I've had to, you know, manage this year in addition to, you know, figuring out how to best spend the money and how to make sure that we're right in line with what the grant rules say. So we do have, we have only spent about $37,000 of the ESSR grants. That's a $77,000 grant. But that grant continues past this year, and we've known that. So a lot of districts are not expending it all right away. They're going to use it to leverage their budgets for the next year. So right now, we still have some funds left in that grant. The CVRF grant, as I mentioned, we moved some expenditures, about $17,000, $18,000 from the CVRF to the Town Care's funds. And that's because we don't have to spend it, like I said, by December 30th. We can now continue to spend it in the, within the next six months. So that'll help us with our salaries for our additional custodians and our building-based subs that we hired that were not budgeted for but that we were using these funds to help pay for. So I'll have a more complete report, like I said, on that next month because that was also breaking news as of last week. You also have the listing of all of the rest of the expenditures that we're seeking reimbursement through our Town Care's amount. The selectman gave us about $350,000. So we've just been, anything that we would have, we wouldn't have had to buy, purchase, absent of the pandemic, we've just been listing those there and in the hopes of getting some reimbursement from the Care's funds for that. So once I see what the reimbursements are coming back from the town are, I can add that to my report. So just in the past month, some of the few things that we've added that have been purchased. Mr. Oliver has been working very diligently and just trying to get Chromebooks from anywhere that he can. He has great relationships with his vendors. And he became aware in mid-December that GovConnection had some about 160 that they were willing to allot to us. So we jumped on that, and so we purchased 160 Chromebooks for $53,000. So that certainly is going to help us out. I know Mr. Oliver and his two technicians, and now he has a third part-time person, have been working hard to get everything ready and distributed out to the family. So good job for them. So that was about $53,000. We also bought some more projectors for the cafeterias and the gyms, well, the cafeterias that have been set up in the gyms so that students can, while they're eating, watch some educational content. And, you know, they get something more than just sitting there in the caf, you know, eight feet apart, eating their lunch. So we improved that so that that's going to be better for our students then. So those are just some of the newer expenditures. Does anybody have any questions on that? So the final part of the report I have tonight is for transportation. So right now, we're meeting with the Budget Subcommittee and the Emerald Family, Emerald Bus, to discuss payment on the 2021 contract. So what I want to let you know is, at issue are the remote non-school days. So mostly Wednesdays, right? We don't, we don't have school, kids coming into the buildings that are getting transported on Wednesdays. Some buses do run on Wednesdays to the high schools, however. So it's a little bit tricky. But what we've done in order to continue to pay something to, on our contract, to fulfill our contract and to fill our obligation to pay our vendor, is we've paid for any, like, what I would say is a normal school day so that the buses are running for the high school, the middle school, and the elementary. So any days that Acushnet Public Schools does not have school, we haven't paid for. We're reserving that for, you know, how we're going to negotiate with Emerald Bus. So I just wanted to mention that to the committee because it is different than what they are invoicing us. They are invoicing us for basically almost 100% of the contract. They are giving a discount for a few of the buses that don't run at all on Wednesdays. So, but they're not discounting for the fact that they don't run to the high, to the elementary and middle school. So I just wanted to let the committee know that that's how we're paying the bill right now. We are meeting at the end of this week to discuss it further. So hopefully, we'll have some, you know, we'll have this, this issue will be resolved sooner rather than later. So that is FY '21. For FY '22 to FY '24, as I mentioned, we're going to be going out to bid for our successor three-year contract. I did talk a little bit about, in our meeting last month, about the IFB, and I kind of summarized the types of things that are in the IFB. And I said I would come back to you and highlight some of the things that I feel need further discussion or some advice from the committee on. So basically, what we want to do is we want to put out an IFB sometime in early to mid-February, after the school committee meeting, after we've decided on some of these issues, that puts it out to prospective bidders to bid on our transportation contract. We have to have a period of advertising, self-specified by Mass General Law, period of advertising, a formal bid opening, and then an awarding of a contract. So we would like to get that bid opened by your, by the March school committee meeting so that we can discuss it and so that we can, we also have an idea of what our costs for next year from budgeting purposes are going to be. So some of the items that I think that we need to discuss, I alluded to them last month, is the style of bus. Acushnet typically has flat-nose style buses. They've been required in our contracts for many, many years, since before I was here. At the time, when it was written into the specifications, I don't know firsthand, as I wasn't here, but at the time, I think the belief was that a flat-nose bus was a safer bus rather than your traditional nose. And working with the transportation consultant, he has a lot of experience in the bus industry. He worked for bus companies. And so, you know, he kind of brought me up to date on what the traditional-style buses are like now. And so now, the style is different. Right now, the standard-style bus, the hood used to come straight out and down. Now it's more slopes, and the driver is up higher. So there's a better line of vision, so you have a better sightline, the way that they're designed. Like I said, the driver's up higher, the nose is sloped down. And there's also added mirrors to both sides so the drivers can see the mirrors on both sides. And there's a lot of training that goes into getting your school bus driver's license. And they get trained in what they're called danger zones. And they're trained not to pull away until they see the children clear from all of the danger zones. So that's some of the differences between that style bus. We do know that the flat-nose style bus is approximately $10,000 more to purchase, and it is sometimes more expensive to repair. Most of the local fleets around here are standard-style. And in conversations with prospective vendors in the past, I would say, hey, how come, you know, you're not bidding on our contract? And one of the things that we received information about was that they didn't have an inventory of flat-nose style buses. So they weren't interested in purchasing the flat-nose style bus in order to satisfy the contract. Okay, so they would have to go out. A lot of times, buses will have, you know, bus companies have an inventory. And if they say, hey, Acushnet wants this style bus this year, oh, I'm just, you know, my contract with X Public Schools is ending, and I have all those buses already paid for and available. So that, you know, that all goes into their decision to bid and what their. So that, you know, that all goes into their decision to bid and what their bid is. So those are some of the, you know, some of the things about flat nose versus standard style. And you would tend to see this flat-nose style buses more in more urban areas, where they're going in and out of side streets, and not so much stretches of longer, more suburban roads. So that's, that's the information I have about the style of bus. Does anybody have any questions or comments about that now?
How would we change that?
So that is a specification that's in the IFB. It does say, you know, Acushnet Public Schools requires X number of buses, flat nose style. So we would either take that out, so that vendors could, you know, supply either style. So we would just take that specification out, if that's what the committee, you know, so chooses. So that's, you know, that would be at your discretion, at your pleasure.
How long does the process take, Kristin? Typically, when we open it for bid, to get bids, negotiate? I know if there's only one, it's probably different than if there's multiple companies bidding on it. But how long does that process usually kind of take from start to finish?
Yeah, so there are mandatory, like I said, advertising requirements. So you have to start back from there. And you want to give the vendors some time, obviously, to really fully inform themselves. I would say at least, you know, from bid, from the putting the bid out to bid opening, at least four to five weeks. So that timeline, like I mentioned, if we could, you know, get the specs out immediately after that first February meeting, which I believe is February second, then that would give a couple of weeks. We'd have a pre-bid conference, then the bid opening. Once the bids are open, the challenge would then be, you know, to evaluate all the bids. But it's pretty cut and dry. It's the lowest responsible responsive bidder. So you would just have to evaluate whether that lowest bidder is responsive and responsible. And that would be through, you know, checking references, looking at the documents, making sure that everything that they were asked to include, they included. So that would take some time for me, but we're not talking days on that. And certainly, that would be a priority at the time. So a sealed, you know, so like I said, sealed bids require advertising. We put the bid out, have a pre-bid conference in case there's any questions, and then have the bid opening. So we certainly could get this done in the next, between now and mid-March. And that's about the timeline we followed three years ago.
I'm assuming that years ago, when the district decided to go with a flat-nose bus, it was mostly out of safety concerns. It sounds as though there's been advances in the traditional-style nosed bus. Do you, I think it would be helpful for us in making decision as a committee to kind of get some more data about the safety, if possible. And it doesn't sound like we have to make a decision on this specification today, but as we're starting to think as a committee how we want to shape this, I think that information would be helpful for me to see. And then, am I right in saying that not only would, if we change the specification, we would be open up, we would be opening ourselves up to more bidding, but also that that could mean a cheaper con, or less expensive contract, because of the fleet is less expensive, or no?
It could, it could, because it would, you know, we don't know what, you know, the prospective vendors are thinking, right? A lot of times, they like to stay where they are. And, you know, we certainly haven't had a lot of bidders on our contracts. The last contract, we had two bidders, which was excellent. And that resulted in a savings from the previous contract to this contract. With, so that was, that was good. And you just, you know, you just don't know. When I, like I said, when I have asked other vendors in the past, the biggest response was, "Style of bus." And also, at the time, we were bidding out on a per-unit trip. So every time, we would say, the bus, we need the buses to go out sixty-five times a day, you know, between all the schools, home to school, school to home. And so a lot of bus companies weren't used to bidding that way, and they just did a bus, a price per bus per day. So we switched to that in the last, at least the last contract, if not before. So that has, you know, that is more attractive to bidders, I think, from what I've been told. So, you know, those couple of things, some of the other things would be, you know, the age of your fleet, which I have here too. You know, depending on what, how old you want your buses to be. And so right now, I think we require them to be 2012 models for the duration of this contract. So no more than eight years old, right? But the buses that Emerald is supplying us right now are 2017 and 2018. So they're supplying a lot newer buses. So it really all depends, like if we had, like I said, if we, if there was another vendor that was coming off a contract that had a fleet of the particular buses that we were requesting, that might be more attractive to them to bid on our contract. You know, rather than go out and purchase or lease, you know, eleven or twelve school buses. So that's quite an investment. So in terms of like the data on safety, I know in the past, I had tried to get some information on that in either the last contract or the contract before. And I, you know, had a hard time getting like any statistics, if there was anything in terms of like safety statistics between a flat nose and a standard-style bus. I reached out to Mass Association for Pupil Transportation, I'm a member, and there just wasn't anything more than, you know, the standard-style buses have made advances over the years. I mean, I can certainly reach out again, but I don't know that that actual data, you know, those studies have, have been or have not been done. I don't know. So, but we can certainly try to get that, so.
All right, thank you.
I just want to mention that in the firm that we utilize for legal, they have an attorney that we've been consulting with, and we will be consulting with on Thursday, who specializes and really focuses in on transportation. So that might be something, Mrs. Flynn, that we can check with, with him on Thursday.
And how much time do we have? Do we have enough time until next meeting to really spend some time on this, Ms. Flynn?
You know, there's, there's a lot, I can certainly, I'm certainly working on it, right? And so if you feel you don't have enough information by the next meeting, that's fine. It's not critical that we get that bid out in February. The better part of getting it out is so that it will inform the budget, you know, so we can have a number in for the budget for, for next year. That's the big part. But we can always put in a placeholder and see where we're at with that. So if we don't have the information that we need by February, then it's, it's not the end-all, be-all. We can certainly, you know, extend it. We could have another meeting, or we can, you know, delay a month to put it out. I wouldn't wait too, too long, say, more than, you know, if we went to the March meeting. Because what happens is, is now, if vendors bid on the contract, and they have to go out and get these buses to satisfy the contract, they may not be able to get the equipment necessary. If we delay it too far into, you know, June, certainly July or August, we won't be ready to go for September. So, but, you know, like I said, right now, getting back to the age of the buses, we require it to be 2012 model. If we were to keep the same requirement, we'd update that to 2015. So that, the buses would be between five and eight years old. Years, contracts passed in order to, in an attempt to save money. We requested older buses. And really, what was happening is, is that you don't save as much, because they're going to put in a cost, you know, for maintenance. The buses require more maintenance. And throughout the course of the year, you may experience some breakdowns, so. We found that that was not our best, you know, option. So we settled on buses between five and eight years old. And certainly, the, when I worked with the consultant, he mentioned that that is a fair amount. You don't really want them too much older. And the buses that Emerald is using right now are seventeen and eighteen. So if they were to bid on the contract next year, they already would have buses of that age. The ones we're using are seventy-seven seat capacity, but we require seventy-one in our contract. So, you know, that's the minimum, minimum seventy-one seats, minimum age, you know, 2015. So those, that particular thing isn't as critical as the style of the bus. Another thing that we have in our contract that is, you know, kind of particular to Acushnet is an onsite dedicated dispatcher. You know, a lot of the bus companies, they run the dispatch out of their home office. We've always required somebody to be sitting here in our building at Ford Middle School. It's really been a great benefit to the principals and to myself and to the superintendent's office, because we have somebody right there that we can go to for questions, and if there's any issues. It's certainly not the end-all, be-all. A lot of school districts operate without an onsite dispatch. But some larger school districts also employ their own, you know, bus coordinator that would do some of that work, that would do the bus stops and do some of the other things, respond to parent issues and complaints. You know, respond to discipline and students returning. So it has worked out for us here.
So Kristin, is that, is that like a nice-to-have, or is that like a must-have in terms of the contract?
It's a nice-to-have, it certainly is. It's not a must-have, it's definitely a nice-to-have. What we did in the last contract is, we said, hey, give us whatever discount. It wasn't part of the rule of award. Now, that's, the rule of award is how the state law says you have to award the contract. So ours is whoever the lowest price per bus per day is, and that's pretty standard. But we said, hey, let us know if we let go of that dispatch requirement, how much are you going to take off the contract? So in other words, you know, we'll award it to the lowest bidder, but we're holding our option open to not have to pay for this dispatcher, you know, if so be it. So the amount that the current vendor said that they would take off was only ten thousand dollars. So certainly, that service is worth more than ten thousand dollars to us in the big scheme of things. So it really wasn't that much of a deduction, so we held on to it. So we can continue to do that in the next, in the next IFB, or we can just drop the dispatch requirement altogether. So that's something that, you know, you'll want to discuss and consider. And some of the other things, you know, there's a few, every, every contract I meet with, the contractor to say, hey, what's working here, what's not working? How can we save some money? So I will be doing that. They already, when we met with them, just before Christmas, they had some ideas on some potential cost savings. You know, some things that they, they might see as ways that, you know, both, both the district and the vendor can benefit from adding or not having. So again, there's some other, you know, we'll be, I'll be meeting with, with them very soon to, you know, to, to go over that with them.
Excuse me, Kristin? In lieu of time, can we discuss this in more detail in the Budget Subcommittee that we have on Thursday? Just the details and try to get the reports and the information that the committee will need to present to them for maybe the February meeting?
I don't know that I'll have all the, that information, other than what I have.
But we can talk about it more, just because I need to go at eight-thirty, and I know there's a couple of more things that we need to, to wrap up. I just wondered if it would be in lieu of time, Craig and I can go over the rest of the items that we need for the contractor, the information that I think the committee would want to make a decision, and then we can go from there? Jen, I'm not sure how you feel about that.
Yeah, no, I, I'm glad that you're saying that, Sarah. I was going to say, there's, you know, there's really just the three points that, that you need, Kristin, to move forward. And so I don't see why we can't do that in the next month.
Okay.
So yes, please, Sarah, that, I think that makes a lot of sense.
That's, that's really all I have, unless anybody has any questions, comments, you know, any other needed information, that's, that's all I have.
Kristin, did you need a vote for, you didn't?
Right, no, no, yep. So I'm glad you mentioned that. We had reserved on the agenda a vote for the FY21 transportation contract payment. But since we haven't, nothing was really resolved at the Budget Subcommittee meeting, so we're not ready to come forward with that yet. Why we wanted, why I wanted to discuss it is so that it would be documented in the minutes for, that we had this discussion as to what we are paying right now for. That way, there's some supporting documentation for the town accountant, so that they can, you know, prove back to why we're not paying for Wednesdays. The simple reason is we're not paying for Wednesdays, because they are not transporting using the buses, you know, for elementary and middle school. So it's really not, you know, a fair assumption to pay the entire amount for those days.
Okay. So with no vote necessary there, just pointing out that there are a number of communications noted in our agenda that was, they were all included in our packet. We have no executive session this evening, so if there's no further discussion or votes needed, we can adjourn. May I request a motion to adjourn, please?
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, there's no further discussion. And Kelly, you can take our final roll call vote to adjourn.
Mrs. Goem?
Yes.
Your subner?
Yes.
Mr. Tabb?
Yes.
Your hood?
Yes.
And Mr. Downey?
Yes. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone.
Have a good night, thank you all.